I'd like to welcome you out to the Planning Commission this evening, October 25th. We'll start this evening with a roll call.
Chairman Cox?
Here.
Vice Chairman Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Hayman?
Here.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Here.
And Commissioner Richter should be here shortly.
Would everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can be seated. Do I have an approval for the agenda recommendation?
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Do I have an approval recommendation for the minutes of 7:26:22?
Motion to approve.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. We come to the portion of our agenda for public comments of items that are not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the commission on matters that are within the commission's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to Brown Act, the Planning Commission may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comments section is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Do we have anybody that would like to address the Planning Commission on items that are not on the agenda? Right there, come right up to the mics because the people in television land can't hear you. Right up here on the wall is what we're discussing tonight. Do we have anybody that's called in? Okay.
Yes, hi.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't mean to address an item not on the agenda. I apologize, but good evening, commission.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing that we have anything that's not on the agenda, we will move forward. I would like to open this public hearing. This is an abatement of 126 South Sunset Street, APN number 477-070-21, property owned by Betty Samback, if I pronounce it, Rivera, who is now deceased. Staff report.
Good evening. As he mentioned, this is an abatement of 126 South Sunset. The RMC ordinance violations are 11-11B, lack of sound and effective exterior wall or roof covering to provide weather protection; D, broken, missing, or inoperable windows or doors constituting a hazardous condition or potential attraction to trespassers; E, unpainted buildings or structures causing dry rot, warping, or termite infestation; F, broken, deteriorated, or substantially defaced structures visually impacting on the neighborhood or presents a risk to public safety; G, substandard building conditions described in the state housing law, including but not limited to Health and Safety Code 17920.3; 2A, an unoccupied and unsecured building or structure; 3A, accumulation of debris, junk, garbage, or refuse; and D, abandoned and broken equipment or machinery or parts thereof. As background, the property owner get this going here. The property owner of 126 South Sunset, Richcrest, California passed away a few years ago, and the property is being managed by her son, Luis M. Rivera II. Previous cases involving the property owned by Ms. Rivera include 214 South Sunset Street, case 142419, 130 South Sunset Street, case 163458, a fire that occurred there, and case 174484, the abatement of 130 South Sunset. Timothy Jacobs of TNT Western Homes purchased much of the land involving the above properties and demolished all uninhabitable structures on those properties. The map you see now, the red and green was what Betty Samback owned. The green is what Tim Jacobs purchased. The buildings that you see in that photo, with the exception of the one in the upper left, which is the one we're talking about, have all been demolished. So all that land has been cleared, with the exception of 126 South Sunset. Ms. Rivera also agreed to pay him $15,000 to demolish the property at 130 South Sunset Street and remove most of the junk and debris. According to Mr. Jacobs, he was managing all rentals of Ms. Rivera and taking the rentals as payment for the demo. Once she passed away, her son, Luisa Rivera, changed rental management companies, and Mr. Jacobs claims he still owes approximately $8,000. On August 10th, 2022, Mr. Rivera was sent a letter regarding 126 South Sunset Street, regarding the above RMC violations, and told to remove all furniture, equipment, trash, and debris from the entire property and to completely remove, abate, all dilapidated buildings on the property, including the main structure, with a deadline of September 4th, 2022. On September 19th, 2022, I re-inspected the property, and nothing had been done to correct the violations, and no contact had been received from Mr. Rivera as to contracting with somebody to do the abatement. As such, a notice of pre-abatement public hearing to abate the property letter was mailed to Mr. Rivera the same date sent priority mail. On October 10th, 2022, Travis Reed, Public Works Director, inspected the structure on the site and advised, in his opinion, if a severe weather event were to take place, it had a high potential to endanger an occupant and/or kill an occupant. Due to these findings and the assessed value of the property, it is my professional opinion that the cost to bring this structure into compliance for occupancy would be economically unfeasible, and therefore the structure should be demolished.
Whoever's called in, you need to mute your computer. Go ahead.
An outstructures are in extreme.
Yeah, I'll have to see how it pans out. I'm in a public meeting right now, so.
Sir, you need to mute your computer.
What time do you think you'll be back, like 7:30, 8? Okay, okay, great, thank you. Have fun. Bye.
Sir, can you mute your computer? Your telephone call was shared with the audience.
Okay. An outstructures are in extreme disrepair and have collapsed. There is no other opinion, in my professional opinion, other than demolition. A review of the Kern County property tax records for this property revealed no payments since December 11th, 2017. Total amount of unpaid taxes currently as of September 13th, 2022 is $6,577.89. In addition, available real estate records indicate the structure in question was built in 1918. A review of property file located in the Building Department indicated the structure had the sewer connected December 8th, 1954, and new electrical wiring June 24th, 1969. Order of abatement to be conducted by the property owner that the abatement to occur includes the complete removal, abatement of all dilapidated, deteriorated buildings and structures on the property, down to the foundation if any, and removal of all furniture, equipment, trash, and debris from the entire property. That the abatement be completed or notification obtained by the code enforcement officer that the services of a contractor have been obtained and verified to do the abatement no later than November 8th, 2022.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, it does.
Commissioner, comments?
Just had a quick question. Have you had any sort of communication or any response to the certified letter?
None whatsoever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments? Is there any comments from the public? I move that we approve the abatement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richter?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
And by the way, that's Resolution 2206. Okay, moving on, Site Plan Review, 2204. Yes, please. Go ahead.
On November 17th, 2020, you all had a planning commission where two resolutions were passed to demolish 744 West Bennett Avenue. A mobile home fire occurred there in September 2018, and 617 South Allen Residential Fire in June 2020. This is when I had already retired, and whoever took my place gave this, and for some reason, no bids were received, and no abatement took place after the resolutions passed. Reportedly, no contractor submitted any bids. Then I was hired in November 2021, and Heather basically gave me some more information about these. This is 744 West Bennett, the before, and this is the after. This is 617 South Allen Street, and that's the after. And that'd be it.
They look better. They also look safer.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you for that update. Moving on, we have a Site Plan Review, 2204. Home Two Suites and Wood Springs Suites, an application for development of a 3.72-acre vacant general commercial zone located on South China Lake Boulevard between East Wilson Avenue and East Church Avenue, consisting of six parcels to construct two hotels, APN 080191-01-06. Staff report.
So this project site is six parcels of general commercial land located at approximately the 300 block of South China Lake Boulevard. The property is bordered by general commercial and also by single-family uses. The property surrounding is all developed, so it makes the property infill development. The proposed project would be the development of two hotels. The first is a Home Two Suites. This would be a three-story hotel. The height of the building would be 47 feet. The total guest rooms is 107. The project would have an indoor pool and outdoor amenity areas. The second hotel would be a Wood Springs Suites. This project would be a four-story hotel with the top building height being 60 feet and 123 guest rooms. The site would have shared parking for both of the hotels, and there'd be access points in multiple locations on East Wilson and on East Church, so there's two on each of those with an alley connecting in the rear of the property, and then one on China Lake Boulevard. Now, there's supposed to be another slide in here. Okay. So at the location right now, this alleyway, the existing residential property that borders along this alley has enjoyed access, and they have gates, and they've enjoyed that the entire time that they've had property. The track map does not restrict access, and we would not do that at this point. However, typically, we do require block walls between residential and commercial just to kind of create a buffer and to also eliminate some noise. However, in this situation, we would not propose that, just because those property owners have enjoyed access. So we would not restrict that. Also, there is currently utility lines running in the alleyway, so we wouldn't want to create a double fencing situation either. So what this development is proposing is they would do the improvements in the alleyway, and then the hotel would be setback and additional. So the total setback from the alley and the existing properties is 65 feet before it reaches the buildings. So that would be our buffer zone, which is consistent with the general plan. Next.
And that's it for the staff report?
No. So this is some elevation views. So this is the Wood Springs Suites. A landscaping plan was also submitted with this. They have low irrigation plants, which is what we require. In addition, they've incorporated landscaping into a stormwater channel along the frontage of the property. This is some elevations of the Home Two Suites. So the total parking for the project, according to the Richcrest Municipal Code, it states that one stall is required per guest room and then one per two full-time equivalent employees. So the applicant has stated that they expect to have eight equivalent full-time employees. So the total required parking between the two hotels for the guest rooms is 230, and then with the parking for employees is 234, and that's the requirement that they have met. So what staff has found is that the project is in substantial compliance with the general plan. As you've seen in the staff report, it meets the land use goals and the community development goals that were outlined, and then the project conforms with the zoning code and the general commercial zone for the building height, the use, and the parking standards. And the project also qualifies for a secret exemption because it's infill, so therefore, staff recommends the approval. Also, I will make note that public notices were circulated to everyone within a 300-foot radius, and no public comments were received. The applicant and a couple of the representatives are on the line on the webex, and we also have in our audience as well. So if the commission has any questions for the applicant, they are here and able to address those questions. And that concludes my staff report.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
Question for the applicant. Is there meeting space at either of these properties?
Whoever's representing the applicant, would you mind coming up here, please, sir?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Adam Corral. I'm the Vice President of Development for Greens. Atman Kadakhia is actually, he's our principal. We had a conflict tonight, and we had to divide and conquer, unfortunately. And then Bob Tuttles, our architect online, and we also have Jamal Ragland, who is our civil engineer. They're also online, available for questions. And on that note, I will give it over to Atman to introduce himself and to answer that question about the conference facilities.
I think you're still muted.
All right, there we go. Can you mute me now?
Yes.
All right, I apologize. I'm not coming in twice, right? I'm on my phone and computer, so. Hope I'm not echoing there. This is the new world we live in, you know, but I'm glad Adam made the journey and came in person. Sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight. But, you know, we are excited about this project, and we appreciate your support, your staff's support on it. To specifically address the question regarding meeting space, there is no meeting space intended in these hotels. There is a possibility that the Home Two Suites has a small boardroom, which is one of the two hotels, but otherwise, this is not intended to serve the meeting space type of customer.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Ferris? Commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is the purpose of this for, like, longer-term contractor stays?
Who are you addressing?
I'm so sorry. Not Adam, but I guess who do I address?
My name is Atman, and you know what? I already started answering you, but I was on mute, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, to answer your question, we are serving longer-term stays, longer-term contractors. Also, you know, there's a lot of folk who are in between housing, transitionary, if you will, or have moved into the area waiting for a home. There's also quite a bit of insurance business as it relates to floods, fires, that type of thing that takes place time to time. So it's effectively catering to a variety of extended stay clientele.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioners? Yes. Yeah.
Might be for Travis. Travis, are you guys redoing the alley in the back there?
Yes, the alley is going from a 20 to a 24-foot wide, and as part of the plan that they show, it is going to be drive accessible, so it will be a paved improvement.
Okay.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. On Planning Commission's conditions, number 19, all mechanical equipment and HVA units placed onsite shall be appropriately screened from view. I noticed that on one of them, we're doing window units, and on the other one, it's not showing window units. And so I'd like to know what your plan is for the HVAC. So Adam or whoever, Ahmed can answer.
That's a great question for our architect, Bob Tuttles, online.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed half that question. I don't know what happened, but it blanked out on my side, and I just heard the very end of it. I'm sure Bob may have heard the whole question, and if not, I may ask you to repeat that. Bob, are you there, sir?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, no. The question was blanked out here also. I'm sorry. I didn't hear the question.
Oh, yeah, so we had an audio issue, I think, that just went all the way around everyone on the phone. Sorry about that, guys.
Okay, can you hear me right now?
Yes.
Okay, on planning's conditions, and that's on our page six, condition 19, all mechanical equipment and HVA units placed onsite shall be appropriately screened from view. From the artist or architect's conception, on the Wood Springs, it appears as though you're doing individual ductless units. Wondering how that's going to be camouflaged. On the other one, it doesn't show in the artist's conception that you're doing window units. So I'm wondering, you know, the home to Wood Springs, I'm wondering, how are you doing your HVAC?
Yeah, I could, oh, go ahead, Bob.
That's a great question. We are planning to do what's called a PTAC, through-the-wall units for both of the projects. We are proposing to do an integral grill where the window and the grill for the unit is the same material, the windows above it, and then below the window is a grill that is made out of the same material as the window. The mechanical unit, the PTAC unit, does not stick out through the wall at all. It is all contained inside the room, and that's what we're proposing.
Okay. The other question I have is actually in Public Works Requirements, and it's on our page nine of 10. And number three says, parking lights to illuminate the drive aisles and spaces shall be required. Location subject to approval by the city engineer and planning department. So here's my question, because we're next to residential. The alley is next to residential. What are your plans for the lighting? Is it hooded? What are your plans for that area so that we don't overly illuminate the residential, but yet we have safety and security in that parking area?
If I may answer that question.
That's another good question, and we will design the lighting to meet the city's safety standard, which is, I don't know for sure what it is. It's either maybe two or five-foot candles. And we will shield the lights around the perimeter. Our intent is to not spill any light outside the property line while maintaining the required lighting for safety. It's a bit of a juggling act, but most of our projects that we do this now, and our engineer is very good at getting good results. We'll be doing a photometric study as we design the site lighting so that we make sure that we're not spilling light outside of the property line.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any other comments or questions from the commission? Do I have any comments from the public?
Warren, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
That fence now not being required as a block, that's gonna, that could be an impediment to the light, correct?
It could. So Travis, what is requirements on the backyard fences or the?
For what? For setback structures? What are we talking about? So their property line is actually on the west side of the alley. So if we were to require them to put a fence up, you would effectively fence off the alley, and the alley would be a through width. That's it. There'd be no access to the hotel from the alley. So that was why we felt that keeping the setback at 65 feet, as Heather indicated in the staff report, with them strategically placing their lights, I would assume that the majority of the lighting that's going to hit the alleyway for safety reasons would probably be off the building. So, and obviously with their light and photometric study, we would verify that the light would not spill out into the adjacent properties.
Yeah, and that's exactly, yeah, that's exactly right. You know, we would propose to place the lights on the building, on the back of the building, in a minimalistic way, simply just to meet safety standards. Really, the frontage of the properties where we want to eliminate from the street, so we have visibility on that side. On the back side, we would do it as minimalistically as needed in order to meet the safety requirements.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and that would also eliminate, you know, the homeowners having access through the alley.
Sure.
Do I have anything else from the public, sir? Be sure and give us your name.
My name's Larry Gwynn. I live at 301 Lenore, and I was concerned about the alleyway, and I'm not really sure what's going on with that.
Travis, you want to address that?
What, when you say concerned about the alleyway, do you have any specific concerns?
I was talking to this gentleman about it, maybe he can tell me more about it.
His concern was, he actually owns an RV, and he wants to make sure that the RV can actually adequately access the backside. And what I proposed was, we would actually just run a turn radius for him, just to make sure that that indeed does work for him with the size of a vehicle.
So, ultimately, I think that's a kindness. The alleyway is 20 feet wide, so technically, he should have to use a 20-foot width to access his lot.
Right.
So, if improvements or changes need to be made, those alterations should technically be on the fence side on his yard to allow for the turning radius.
Great.
So, is the alleyway going to be the same width? Is it wider?
So, the alleyway is being made four foot wider than the typical use. So they're going to add four foot to it, so you're going to have the luxury of an extra four feet to swing out wide to get in. And then, obviously, I don't think they're going to have hotel police out there every two seconds. If you have, if the parking spaces aren't occupied and you have to swing out a little further, I don't think the hotel police are going to come after you.
Okay. I don't have a license on that. Is there any way I can park there or have a side of my fence without any problem?
Not in the alleyway.
Not within the alleyway. The alleyway is a traveled way that's supposed to be open for the public, so, and it doesn't have adequate space for parked vehicles on the side.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Any other public comment? Yes, caller?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, Jamal?
Hello, go ahead.
Okay, this is Mike Neal. So, this is what you do, have absolutely nothing else to do on a Tuesday night, to watch a planning commission meeting. So hotels, hotels, and hotels, double hitters here you got going, guys. You got TOT tax, and you got more property tax, and more of these you can get built. So, approve these guys and go out and get us about eight more in town, and then maybe we won't have to have Bruins sales tax. So, I'd say, go for it, go for it. That's all.
Thanks, Mike. Any other callers? Okay, seeing none, I move that we approve the resolution 22-07 on the site plan review of 2204.
I'm a little shocked you didn't have your patented question that you always have.
All right, thanks.
What would you like?
Well, your question, are you good with all these conditions?
Well, I've read the conditions, and I didn't see any complaints. So, there's history behind that, so.
There definitely is a history behind that.
Anyway, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mondrayan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, moving on, we've had a request for a conditional use permit, 2201, mural an applicant for consideration of mural location at 139 Balsam Street, and increase the total aggregate sign area for written message. Staff report. Oh, excuse me, APN 067-194-01, applicant Aaron Podell.
Hold on, let me catch up. Okay, so this is before you tonight, because we had a public complaint regarding this mural going up. The way that the municipal code is written, any mural is to be approved by planning commission. So, what the municipal code states is that planning commission considers murals by how they comply with three standards. Those three standards are whether the mural demonstrates artistic quality or theme as opposed to a direct or indirect illustrative advertisement. The second is that the colors or materials used shall be reasonably harmonious. And the third is that the subject matter shall not be calculated to deride any person, group, or persons or activity. The second portion of what staff is asking, or what the applicant's asking tonight, has to do with the text portion. Sorry, let me change the slide so you can see this. So, what the municipal code says, even for the mural, is that the text portion has to comply with the standard sign code, which is regulated by the zone. So what the zoning code says is that the total aggregate sign area is based on the frontage of the street for the building. So this Panamet Street side is 120 feet, so you get two times the street frontage, so that'd be like 220. Obviously, the wording on here exceeds that. So that's what the conditional use portion is for, it's for the consideration of the enlargement for the total sign area for the wording portion of this. So, what's before planning commission tonight is the mural with the conditional use for the consideration of the overages for the wording. And so, planning commission has to make the determination of whether or not the mural complies with those three standards. In addition to that, is the CQW. Obviously, this is exempt, it's a minor alteration of an existing facility. This was circulated through public notice to individuals and businesses within 300 feet, it was posted in the newspaper, and it was posted on the city website. A couple of comments were received. The applicant has also written in, so I will share a couple of those with you tonight. The applicant has written in and said that, he says that he cannot be here tonight because he, it has his children this week. He says that his statement in support of the mural is, "The first amendment is great, the second equally as important. People can take offense to the word gun in my mural, it's their right to voice any opinion. Voice and guns are basically the first and second amendment. My wall art took complicated planning, graphic design, heavy equipment, investment, visual thought, planning, and much more. I am very proud of how it looks and how it increases our city's beautification. I was unaware of any laws about painting my own building. I completely understand the city's duty to follow law and any complaints. Thank you." Additional comments were received. This one says they believe the mural does not represent our community as a whole and believed it should be removed. This comment is another opposing. It says, "Dear planning commission, as a mother, grandmother, and a retired teacher, I am concerned about school shootings and the increasing number of mass shootings we Americans have suffered in many other venues. This mural glorifying guns and violence is not welcome in my city. Why was it not properly vetted?" That concludes the comments that I have received, and that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Let me lead with this while you're thinking. So, I took a stroll down Balsam, knocked on every door that owner was there and was willing to talk to me on both sides of the street, and found zero people that were concerned about the mural. I stopped and visited with Mr. Podell and found him engaging, willing to comply with whatever city ordinance there was, as he repeated to me as well, he was unaware that painting his own building, you know, you understand signs, somebody puts up a sign that there might be requirements, but painting his own building, he was unaware, and that did add advertising square footage to his building. Now, having said all that, we have to consider the three things that the mural might represent. One is the mural and graphics shall demonstrate artistic quality or theme as opposed to direct or indirect illustrative advertising. Okay? The second is the colors and materials used shall be responsibly harmonious with those in the area and shall not be used for the exclusive purpose of calling attention to the mural or graphics. The subject matter shall not be calculated to deride any person, group, or persons or So those are the three things that we need to consider. My personal opinion is, is that it is direct or indirect advertising. So thus, we would have to do a conditional use to expand that ability for advertising. My personal opinion, the colors and materials are not off the chart. I don't find it that it's calculated to deride any person or group, and so for me, it's the direct or indirect advertising. When Mr. Podell was sent the notification of violation, he was also given the solutions to this problem. And having been given those solutions, which were not shared with everybody, those solutions gave him the opportunity to come to the planning commission and ask for a conditional use permit. I believe where he's not here tonight, I think that his letter explaining as a single dad, his responsibility is to his children as well, I find it heartfelt. And so, that's what I have as far as my own personal investigation. Does the commission have any other questions for staff or comments?
I don't necessarily have a, I have a question. One of the letters just says, "Why was this not properly vetted?" And that's a question that I, in his letter, it sort of explains that, you know, he wasn't aware of any, anything that would prohibit this. And I think that the city has done a good job at providing him now the opportunity to get a permit.
Resolution?
For a resolution, yeah. So, I think that it's sort of backwards in the way that that was done, but I still think that it's, it would put him in compliance with that, should the commission approve.
If you still want to think, I'll turn it out to the public.
Can I add one thing to that thought?
Yes, go ahead, Travis.
I just want to make sure that the commission kind of has an understanding of why this ordinance is in place. So this ordinance is in place if, like you said, like he says, something that singles out a group. We obviously wouldn't want to allow somebody to paint on the side of their building, and I hate to use the word hate, but I hate so-and-so. That is the reason why this ordinance is in place. So, and I personally, like you, don't see a problem with the mural, but should it have been done the right way? Yes. Is he trying to do it the right way now? Yes. So I just think that it's very crucial that we keep the idea of why the ordinance is in place at heart, as well as what the mural is doing or saying.
Thank you. Let's turn this out to the public. Is there any public comment that would like to address the commission? Thank you, sir.
My name is Jason Tharp. I'm the president of American Custom Lifts. We are headquartered in Ridgecrest with an office in the 139 Center on Balsam Street. Our company sells American-made premium car lifts and freight lifts all over the world. We are proud to have our business in Ridgecrest and to be located within the building that houses the mural. The mural and Brass Depot represent our American manufacturing business well and is enjoyed by our visitors who visit us. Just in the last year, we have welcomed vendors from Italy, Georgia, Oklahoma, and Texas. Each time, they compliment the mural. Aaron Podell and his businesses do a lot for our community. The mural was a great way to dress up the side of the building and add curb appeal to Balsam Street. The city should grant permanent approval for this mural. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Eric Bruin, 208 Barbara Avenue, representing as a private citizen. I just wanted to go ahead and share just a couple of quick pieces of information. I want to make sure that the commission is well aware that Mr. Podell was very cooperative and very communicative when the city approached him after the social media explosion that this mural created. And I want to be very clear that he understood that there was a mistake made and that there was a solution forward, and that the city and him both had a solution to work forward. I do encourage the approval of the permit. I think that he was putting his best effort, and he's invested a lot of time and money into it. I don't believe it is a negative reflection to our community. I think he just went a little overboard on the size, and he didn't understand the exact requirements for the signage. It's very simple. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Anybody else in the congregation? Yeah, in the gallery?
Eric Wonderlick, I, as with everybody else, I sort of strongly agree, it's a beautiful mural. Indeed, it probably could be seen as a little bit indirect advertisement for the business, but it's really quite beautiful, and I really like it, honestly. And for the record, I really like his gun shop. I've been in there a couple times, and it's, I've been in gun stores from coast to coast. It's quite literally the nicest one I've ever been to. And I hope, you know, being that he's applied for some remediation, he's, you know, gone through the process for the minor alterations exemption, I hope that you guys support this and not have to tear down this thing that's beautiful to put something else up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the gallery? Okay, so we have callers. So whoever's calling in, tell us your name.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Mike Neal again, busy night for the planning commission. Hey, Mr. Cox, I thoroughly appreciate the way you were in and did investigations and vetted this situation. Appreciate that, that's kind of a little bit over and above. As far as the mural itself, all I have to say is, I love it. I think it adds a lot to that part of downtown. I think it adds a lot to that part of downtown, which you guys can find a way to encourage other businesses to do likewise. Just think about this one, man. It's the California bear and a bullet. And the words to say guns and ammo. I've already talked about how many more guns in town, so the criminals are scared to come here, and this guy's doing it all on his own, just, you know, put a little paint on his building, and there you are. So give him the CUP, let him go and leave it just exactly the way it is. I think you'll find that as you go through town in the coming months and so forth, people meet you to slap you on the back, you're going to find most of the people in town say, hey, I really like that thing. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any other callers? If not, then I would vote for an approval of Resolution 2208. I'll second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ferris?
Aye.
Yeah, I just combined Ferris and Hayman.
It's the mask. It's the mask.
It's the sinus infection. Commissioner Hayman?
Upstain.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richter? Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks for those that come and express their feelings. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to discussion and action items. Six-cycle regional housing needs allocation, staff report. Boy, do we know how to clear a house.
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming.
So this was the exciting part where we were going to talk about chickens. Still didn't work. Sorry, Chairman.
What came first, though? The chicken or the egg?
Oh, you want to talk about chickens now? Wait a minute, Jessica, you can't leave. We're going to talk about chickens.
This is the most important part.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I will. So I'm just giving you guys an update because I want you guys to know where we're at and be prepared for where we'll be going for the next year. So we have the numbers for the six-cycle regional housing needs allocation. Those were approved by and adopted by KernCog, approved by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. In your staff reports, there's some more information about what the housing element is, what it does, you know, what we're kind of looking at. So our numbers are not drastically that different. A lot of other places in the state, we're not so lucky. A lot of other areas in the state are having to do a lot of rezoning of their commercial areas in order to meet their housing numbers. We will not, I do not anticipate that we would need to do that. We still have plenty of residential areas vacant that are zoned already, that we should be able to continue to meet these areas. Over the last several years that I've been here, we've been keeping track of places that could possibly be rezoned, and that's working with property owners as well. That's not forcing rezoning, that's rezoning that makes more sense based on property owners' desires as well. So we did circulate an RFP, and I will be taking to counsel next week, a consultant to work with us to start doing our updated housing element. It is due by the end of 2023, so we do have a short window. There'll be a lot of public meetings, so, but we have a lot of our numbers and a lot of our data already, so. That's about it, but I just kind of wanted to let you guys know about that and then kind of invite you guys to ask questions and be a part of that process with us.
So does that mean we would get notices of the meetings and we could come to them?
Yep.
Okay.
And we'll be having public meetings and looking for ways to engage more than just our general council, planning commission as well, you know, looking for ways to engage other groups and get feedback from different groups that we don't normally see.
So are you talking like not homeowners, homeowners as a group you're trying to engage, or what specifically are you looking to engage?
Well, a lot of it is we're looking to engage all kinds of different people. You know, Bakersfield has been doing theirs, so they've used their website, sending out lots of surveys and stuff electronically, trying to just get information from different people about what they think the housing needs are, or what they think some of the housing issues are.
Does this have anything to do with the Ridgecrest City survey that popped up on a bunch of emails last week?
No. No, it doesn't.
So this chart that you provided for us here, is this housing units that we're trying to achieve, or that's what you project that we have right now or have a need for right now?
Those numbers that are in this chart are the numbers that we have been assigned from the KernCog. So if you remember, over the last couple of years, I've been reporting to you guys that annual progress report.
Right.
And it tells you how many units we've made every year in the different categories. This will be the new cycle, so these are the new numbers. So previously, our number was like, we had 1,300 units that they expected us to, that they thought we might need to build. So that's the projected growth that KernCog thinks that we'll have from 2023 to 2031 is 1,436 units, and this is how they break it down by income. And so in the staff report, I put, because I think when we look at this, it's like, what is very low? What is low? What does that mean? So if you look at the second page in the staff report, it defines what those income levels actually are, just to kind of help you understand, like, what does all this stuff even mean?
So...
It's like, what is, what is very low income? What is that?
So the couple of questions that I have is that in the 40 years that I've lived here, my wife was raised here. We've seen some growth, some population change, but not a wide swing of population change.
Right.
Because of the traditional employers that are here and the education that that requires. And the last year or two, California has now indicated that it's on a population decline. And I'm curious if KernCog has taken any of that into consideration when they're adding, say, 130 units to Ridgecrest where our population hasn't changed dramatically and California's on a decline?
So actually, the way these numbers work is that California as a whole comes up with these numbers, and then each of the regional governments gets assigned numbers based on the California number. So California comes up with the population estimated growth over these cycle periods, so over the six-cycle period. So the six-cycle is 2023 to 2031. And then each of the regional governments gets their share based on their growth from the last cycle. And then that regional government, so ours is KernCog, so that regional government breaks it down to the different jurisdictions in their government. So our KernCog consists of Bakersfield, California City, Delano, Maricopa, McFarland, Ridgecrest, Shafter, Taft, Tehachapi, Wasco, and Kern County, the unincorporated portion.
Does it not include Mojave?
Mojave is the unincorporated portion of Kern County.
Okay, okay.
So it, the number was the total number that Kern County had was 57,650 units. So that was the total number that KernCog had to separate between the jurisdictions. And then the formula that they used, I mean, there's a huge, huge booklet I can share with you, but the basic is, the way that they used to do it was to, which really kind of increased urban sprawl, right? So now, instead of trying to do that, the way that they divide the numbers is by job centers and resources. So instead of trying to push out like, oh, you have more land, you can accommodate more growth, now they're really saying, you have more jobs, you can accommodate more growth. So the numbers are more reflected toward the resources that you already have. So that's why our numbers are very similar to what they were 10 years ago. They're 100 different than they were 10 years ago.
Okay.
And then these numbers also too, these aren't like our target or anything.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if they're throwing a dart at a wall and saying, this many?
No.
Or is it based on your population?
Yeah.
You know, so on and so forth, and so, okay. And there were just a couple of factors I'm going, interesting, we increased, but the state is decreasing. So, okay.
And there's, there's no penalty for not hitting your numbers, right? It is merely a atta boy if you get them? Or is there a penalty?
So there's no penalty for hitting your numbers, but the, what, and this doesn't necessarily, well, I mean, I guess it could, but generally speaking, this really comes more into play in larger metropolitan areas where they're trying to deny developments in more, in lower, I can, lower income, where they're trying to deny affordability projects because they're saying, you know, it gives California the ability to say, like, you can't deny projects just because it's low income, because you have to meet your RENA number of this many units. So if they don't meet those, you know, if they meet that number, then they have a little bit more ability to say, we've already met our RENA number, and now we can deny those projects. But if they don't, then they can't.
We just point them to Norma Street. Any other questions?
I just want to say that you're so glad you're here with us. Absolutely, and if you knew the heartache and the heart and soul that she puts into this thing, that it's beyond me, beyond my capability by far with all the work she does on this, so hats off to you.
Thank you, Heather.
And your staff reports look awesome, by the way.
Thanks.
Yep, Heather, you did a good job. All right, if, if there's nothing else, let's go down to Commissioner comments and committee reports. Start with me.
I've been overseas for the last month, so I have nothing for you.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Oh, wow. No comments either?
N- no.
All right. Bernie?
I have nothing.
Vanessa?
Just quality of life was just going over updates on the grants and stuff, but other than that, there's nothing.
City Org has met several times since I've been at, planning every time to discuss waste management. Comments? I would just say, I'm looking forward to the developments that are, that are proposed. I think that Ridgecrest is on a good trajectory, and thank you to staff for the wonderful reports.
Could you please give us an update, verbatim, what they said in some of those meetings?
We'll meet off the...
Verbatim? Yeah, we're going to go to three trash cans, that's all you need to know.
And it's going to cost X.
And there may be some opposition to that.
Maybe just a little.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's interesting, they're proposing reducing the amount of times that they pick up their recycle to every other week. My rec, or, or once a month, I guess it is, or something, because it's every other week now.
Yeah, every other week.
And my recycle is always full, so. Anyway, it's, it's interesting what they're proposing for me. Let's move on to staff item, which is an update on the EV charging station.
So I told you guys I would follow back up with you. I was hoping to have an updated site plan tonight, and I probably do somewhere buried in my email from today or yesterday.
Oh, he dropped the ball.
I don't, yeah. But I don't have it for you tonight, but I wanted to give you guys a, a quick update. We explored some different options with fire department. There is not a substantial change to the site itself. We are currently looking at deleting the drive approach off China Lake Boulevard and the westernmost one off of French, so we alleviate the congestion problem at French and China Lake Boulevard and basically have one entrance and exit point off of...
French.
French, on the furthest east. The other thing we're looking at, I actually was just texting one of the engineers involved with it, our phase-two sewer project is out. One of the conditions as, one of you, one of the commissioners brought up and asked if it was common if we install a lateral, they're working on getting us a location so we can work in conjunction with that and hopefully save the cutting of our new pipe. And other than that, they've run into a couple of little site issues with drainage. We got a hydrology memo the other day to which we asked for one minor correction as far as how the storm drain is going to function. We have a couple of issues to weed out with that. Cover's going to be an issue, so we might be prohibited based off of size. Staff did suggest maybe going to RCP, which is reinforced concrete pipe, or a box culvert style, but although a box culvert gives us a lot more clearance for cover, which is what we were running into, which was our problem with how deep the pipe was going to be, it is substantially more expensive. And given the location, how hard it's going to be to find any other potential sewer, I would hate for that to be the one item that hinges the project for moving forward. So I've been very open to discussing alternative solutions, and as long as we can mitigate the problem with where the water gets there and make sure we don't cause flooding on 178, I'm inclined to push this thing along. They did pothole out there the other day for the water line that runs through it, and they are currently working on coming up with options to relocate the water line around where the structure is, so that way they can keep the site plan substantially the same and they do not have to come back to Planning Commission. So, and with that, if you guys have any questions or anything else about the project?
I just want to make sure I'm getting it. So we got rid of that fun, let's come in from both ways thing they have going, so it is one way, and it exits, does it go west to east or east to west?
So if you were coming, let's say we're headed north on China Lake Boulevard.
East to west.
You make your right onto French, you drive up French some, you'll make a right into the parking lot, you'll drive down, you'll enter and make a complete U with the turnaround.
Okay.
Go through the drive-through, so that way the drive-through can be subjected, so your left side's on the drive-through, at which point you exit back out the same way.
Cool. Okay.
So that way, it mitigates any work in the Caltrans driveway, it mitigates any illegal left turns coming in off of French, and we should be good to go.
I'm, I'm glad that they were open to that proposal because that seems a lot safer.
They were always open to the proposal. It was more, I was worried more about the fire department not having two points of access.
Got it, okay.
So.
And then, so are they going to go, is the cheaper option for drainage still feasible?
Absolutely. So the cheaper option was a 30-inch RCP pipe, which is just a regular round pipe, not a box culvert style.
Okay.
When I looked at the hydraulic...
Corrugated, right?
No, this is a reinforced concrete because it's, it's too close to the surface to go corrugated. When we looked at the options, just based off flows in that area, the inlets that are there already can't handle the storm event that's there, so we're proposing basically to put a pipe in that can handle what the inlets will allow. The one thing I worry about is if we don't have any capacity enlargement in the pipe, now that we're piping it for 300-some feet, we all know that maintenance sometimes, for lack of a better term, can go not done. I just want to make sure, I asked that, we would prefer a 36-inch, just that way if we get any scattered debris in there, the water's got some room to get around it, and that way we don't create another problem at that intersection.
And the homeless out.
And the homeless out, the homeless won't fit, well, the homeless will fit in the 36-inch pipe, but I don't know that I would want to lay like this to get in it, so.
To get out of the rain in a storm drain?
So we're, we're looking at to make sure that the cover can, that we can get adequate cover on the 36-inch, but if we can't get adequate cover on the 36-inch, I'm still inclined to approve the 30-inch because it can accept the loading that the inlets will allow.
It's just a little bit, a little bit more sketchy, but not super sketchy.
Yeah, I think if we end up going the 30-inch route, we'll definitely have some strategic language in there that if we start to see a problem, may require them to remediate.
Got it.
So...
And this, this was all part of a grant? A grant that's due at March or in the end of December?
He is the, it's the SCE Charge Ready Program, and I think there might be one more form of funding that I don't know.
Okay.
But he had to have his applications in for the Charge Ready Program, I believe, last month. And I know they hit that target because they are full go on getting the site set up.
Got it.
It's been surveyed, they've done hydrology memos, so they've been moving in the path towards construction. And I spoke with the owner yesterday and he's like, he already told me, he's like, I'm ready for it to be built right now, so...
So is that the only wicket that we were really concerned about, was the application itself, or is there another wicket that they need the town on board with in order to keep moving forward?
That's from your guys' approval and so graciously giving me the, the public safety and the, uh, authority to say yes or no, they've basically achieved all the approvals they need from us, other than building permits, finals, things like that when they start their construction process.
Right, thank you.
Anything else? Then I will call an adjournment at 7:15.